BMW will also take advantage of a business tax holiday which exempts companies from paying the gross receipts tax for three years. An economic revitalization plan created and implemented by Mayor Antonio Villarosa to spur growth and jobs.
Beverly Hills BMW's move is the first time in 25 years that an auto dealership has moved to Los Angeles from another city. Now, the move is expected to bring in 150 jobs and generate $150 million in revenue this year.
We're confident that, you know, the building, that building the state-of-the-art facility here in the city of Los Angeles was the right choice, and we're proud to be the first dealership to move into the city.
City officials say auto dealerships are the largest contributor of sales tax to the city's budget, generating $3.3 billion in sales every year and paying $271 million in annual taxes.
When you run for office, you want to create jobs, not, uh, not cut them. You, you, you want to grow the pie. And the way for us to get out of this crisis is to be more business friendly.
And by being more business friendly, Mayor Villarosa hopes to create new jobs and opportunities, one business and one policy at a time. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
According to a USC study, the business tax holiday will create 55,000 jobs in the city of Los Angeles. And for the first time, the city of Los Angeles has partnered with local car dealers to provide internships for auto repair students. As Anita Bennett tells us, the internships have the potential for big payoffs down the road.
These auto repair students at LA Trade Technical College have a chance to do something none of their classmates has done before.
Students will be paid to work side by side with professional auto technicians as they earn their degree at either Trade Tech, where we're at today, or Pierce College.
The internships are part of a new program to give students hands-on training. City leaders came up with the idea at last year's LA Auto Show after meeting with carmakers and dealers.
We started talking about their needs, and it became clear that they couldn't find trained entry-level people. Mechanics, service technicians, people who want a career in sales.
Now that's about to change. Four dealerships have signed on to take part, including the Shamus Group, which owns its Porsche dealership in downtown LA. The dealership will let the students get under the hoods of their cars while preparing them for what the CEO of this dealership says will be good careers.
One thing I'd really like to stress is that the kind of jobs that are coming up of these programs are good-paying, family-supporting jobs.
It's exactly the kind of opportunity that brought Jesse Melendez to LA Trade Technical College.
Being here at LA Trade for three years and the, uh, and the abilities that they, that I have acquired from the programs, uh, they will show those abilities at the workplace at the internship.
Among the skills Jesse and the other students are learning: rebuilding engines, troubleshooting electrical problems, and hybrid repairs. All skills with the potential for promising careers down the road. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
In addition to that Porsche dealership, Galpin Ford, Miracle Mile BMW, and Longo Toyota are also taking part. The internships are set to begin in the next few weeks. And more job news: through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act's High Growth Sector Training Grant, the city has provided over $1.2 million in helping Angelenos overcome barriers to employment. Rasha Goel explains.
I'm ready. I'm ready to take off and take this wherever it's going to take me. Wherever it leads me, that's where I'm going to go. The sky's the limit.
Jomaniya Parker, a single parent, is one of 18 other graduates who are flying high. Thanks to a program called Bankworks, she and other graduates are hopeful and excited about a new career path.
It's really geared towards people who are interested in starting a long-term career in banking, and so we help them, give them all the tools that they need.
I look at Bankworks as us opening a door. It's now up to the graduates to walk through that door and to work hard and demonstrate that that opportunity is one, they're, one, going to take control of, and two, going to leverage into a career in these banks.
The Bankworks program was created by Jewish Vocational Service, a nonprofit organization that helps people find jobs and support their families. The organization partnered with the city of Los Angeles's High Growth Financial Sector Initiative and local banks to offer the eight-week program which provides job training, job placement assistance, and ongoing coaching for career advancement in the financial sector.
With the challenges we face in today's economy, the Bankworks program is more relevant and valuable than ever. And we could not do it without all of our generous banking partners, who wear two hats as donors and employers.
This is a benefit, uh, to our corporate partners, because now they got folks that have the skill set, and certainly the Spanish, the Ghana has the willingness to go do it and, and go to work and kind of contribute.
Bankworks is a program for people from all walks of life. It's not only for those who are just starting their careers after high school, but for many, it's a new beginning. In fact, many of the graduates here are either single parents looking for a new career or have lost their jobs.
I was in the fitness industry for the last 10 years, and now I'm looking for something a lot more long-term.
And that search begins immediately after they receive their certificates. Graduates have the opportunity to interview with the banks on the spot. From the Expo Center, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
After completing the program, nearly 80% of Bankworks graduates are employed. Airplane aficionados, you're clear to land at the LAX Observation Deck, that is. It's a favorite among planespotters and sightseers alike, and what a sight to see. During a recent outing, Gilrayes shows us a new generation of international jumbo jets.
Arriving on time, this imposing sight: Air New Zealand's new Airbus A320. Bearing the sleek black colors of New Zealand's rugby team, it made a one-time-only stop at LAX, a break in the delivery flight home from a factory in France.
Well, it really doesn't stop me, the weather, because, you know, I think it's actually more interesting when it's raining. I mean, I think it's just way cooler with the rain.
Just like some boys, I guess, like cars, this boy likes airplanes.
Wet weather didn't hamper the spirits of these airplane aficionados at the first Sunday morning coffee event at LAX. It took place on the airport's observation deck atop the iconic theme building. It reopened last summer after a three-year, $12 million renovation, including earthquake retrofitting.
This was a way to get the word out again, to help promote that the Observation Deck is open. It was very popular before we closed it, and we're hoping to bring it, bring it back to, uh, that level of popularity.
Fans also got a peek at Australia's Qantas Airbus A380, the world's largest commercial airliner recently resumed daily service between LAX and Sydney. Also appearing, this rare bird on the West Coast: Air New Zealand's new Boeing 777-300.
So we had some very unique things happening today.
The ruthless Observation Deck offers a 360-degree view of Southern California. Telescopes included, umbrellas are not. At LAX, Gilrayes for LA This Week.
The deck is open on weekends, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Free coffee and snacks are provided on special occasions only. LAX hopes to have another Sunday coffee event in March. The month of February is National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Cindy San Luis tells us how a local school is educating its students on this issue.
Adolescence is often when people have their first boyfriend or girlfriend, but there's a startling statistic that comes with the territory. Almost half of Los Angeles high school students, 43% of girls and 43% boys, report experiencing some sort of physical abuse from a dating partner. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, one in 11 adolescents have been the victim of physical dating violence. And nationwide, the number is close to 1.5 million teenagers.
I never seen or had any friends that were in a relationship with violence, but I hope it would never happen to anyone.
The key to reading the relationship is respect.
So Mayor Antonio Villarosa joined nonprofits Break the Cycle and Peace Over Violence at an assembly in support of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month.
Isolating you from your family because you can't have a friend in your family, that's not good. It's sad.
It's, um, really a strong and silent epidemic that we could be doing a lot more to address.
Speakers talk to teens about what makes a healthy relationship and what is abuse.
We made a, a very own video showing how violence is not sexy, violence is not good.
That constant monitoring, that, um, fear that you're walking on eggshells is not how your relationship should make you feel. You should feel supported and like you're growing as being part of the partnership.
Some people do take, um, to the next level, they act to, they carry, they get carried away with, with their relationship, they get jealous, and that causes problems.
I don't believe in violence, so when it comes in a relationship, I think you should just walk away.
A message that heartbreak may be a part of growing pains, but never violence. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
The Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Initiative was spearheaded by teens across the nation who chose to take a stand and put a stop to teen dating violence. Delta's flying high on the heels of a new agreement with the city of Angels, and a reminder about a tax credit you could qualify for, also a Valentine to our city's senior citizens. These stories and more in City Beat. L.A. Kings mascot Bailey joined Delta Airlines executives to celebrate a new multi-year deal to make Delta the official airline of the L.A. Kings. Mayor Antonio Villarosa was also on hand to celebrate the agreement, which makes Delta also an official founding partner and official airline of Staples Center. The luncheon was held at downtown's Grammy Museum, also a new Delta partner.
We're excited about the partnership that we have with Delta. Not only are there 2,800 employees, but increasingly, uh, more and more flights.
The luncheon also celebrated Delta Sky Magazine's upcoming Los Angeles issue. Delta's in-flight magazine reaches over 5 million people each month. L.A. City Controller Wendy Gruhl is calling for the consolidation of the city's various financial offices in her latest audit. It's all part of Gruhl's continuing effort to streamline city bureaucracy as the city faces a $350 million budget deficit next fiscal year. Currently, the city's financial operations are distributed among several city departments, including the Office of Finance, the City Administrative Office, and the Office of the Treasurer. Gruhl is recommending that the Treasurer's Office be consolidated with the Office of Finance immediately. We're right in the middle of tax season, but there is an upside. Councilmember Richard Alarcon is reminding qualifying residents of the Earned Income Tax Credit, which can range into the thousands of dollars per household and which often goes unclaimed.
Last year, over $1 billion went unclaimed in California, and over $300 million is left unclaimed in Los Angeles alone.
EITC is designed to lower the tax burden on low-income working families. Alarcon also honored the city's 21 local family source centers for offering access to free tax preparation to low and moderate income residents through its Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, or VIDA, program. A line formed around the block for the hottest ticket in town. Some 600 dapperly dressed seniors attended the fourth annual Senior Valentine Ball at the Los Angeles Christian Presbyterian Church in El Salino. They were treated to a formal dance and dinner hosted by Council District 14 a few days before Valentine's Day.
We're going to get to dance and just have fun with our friends.
Folks from the Greatest Generation and all the sacrifices they made for us, it's a small token of our appreciation. Council District 14.
And seniors did not go home empty-handed. There was a raffle with prizes, including gift baskets, gift certificates, and a big flat-screen TV. While some people celebrated Valentine's Day with dinner and dancing, others marked the holiday by adopting a furry friend. Anita Bennett takes us to an Adopt a Valentine Pet Festival. This dog is hamming it up in hopes of standing out from the pack. The hot dogging was all part of a pet adoption festival held to coincide with Valentine's Day.
This is our second annual Adopt a Valentine event. Uh, last year, we adopted 45 dogs and cats. This year, we're already at 30, and so we expect to go way over 45.
Friends of Herman Dog Park hosted the event, along with the city of L.A.'s North Central Animal Shelter and other groups. Comedian Deborah Wilson of Nat TV fame was also there to lend a hand.
Mr. Wonderful! This is a German Shepherd child mix, black and brown. Mr. Wonderful is eight years old.
Dozens of families came out to enjoy the fun and to check out the four-legged friends. Activists say it's not just the animals that benefit from pet adoption, people do too.
These animals give love unconditionally, and I guarantee you, when you adopt, what you're actually doing is rescuing yourself.
Judging by the crowds, the call to adopt a furry Valentine was a barking success. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The first 25 people to take home a pet received a $25 discount off adoption fees. A place of quiet contemplation and peaceful retreat right in the middle of the city. I'm talking about a new garden on the west side that some are comparing to an outdoor library. A celebration is underway as residents gather at the Westwood Gardens Park on South Glendon Avenue for its grand opening. This small park, which sits in the shadow of high-rises, makes it the perfect oasis from the hectic demands of life in a big city.
When you come to Westwood, you see the buildings and the traffic and the parking lots and the commercial areas, but this is a neighborhood. This is a place that people live, a piece, a place that children grow up. This is a place that people come to work every day, and this park is really a focal point now for that community.
And the park couldn't have a better neighbor.
The park's location next to the Westwood Library makes it a perfect, uh, public open space to, to come and share ideas and read books and, and think about making a real change in the world.
Maybe have children from the library come over here and have storytelling. Um, anytime there's a park instead of a building, it's, it's a benefit.
It'd be nice to check out a book and hang out here in the park. Um, and it's nice, it's safe, it's lit, so we've just been eager for it to open.
Park designers hope the now beautifully landscaped park can be a place for so-called quiet arts, like reading and painting, a far cry from the parking lot the land was once used for.
I guess in reality, we kind of did the reverse of the Joni Mitchell song, "Per Paradise" and put up a parking lot. We, uh, took out the parking lot and we put up paradise.
A paradise, indeed, where families can come, soak in the sun, and get away from it all, if only just for a moment. The park was built with about $300,000 of Quimby funds paid by developers. And in this week's list of things to do and exhibit at the museum, or how about one you can visit right from your couch? Enjoy an afternoon of chamber music, co-presented by the Los Angeles Philharmonic Association, on Saturday, February 26th, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM at the Mark Taper Auditorium. The Mark Taper is located at the Central Library downtown at 630 West 5th Street. To purchase tickets, call 213-228-7025, or go to allowedla.org. And if you want to check out some museum exhibits but are feeling a little lazy, go to the L.A. Public Library website at lapl.org/virgal, as in virtual gallery, to check out some of its past exhibits online. Exhibits include online photo galleries on the 1932 Olympic Games in the city of Los Angeles, California in the 1920s, or the fine art of film posters, all at the click of a mouse. Maybe what you find online will inspire you to make a trip to the library after all to see some current exhibits on display. And CSUN's China Institute and its Department of Art Galleries presents an exhibition of prints from Professor Guo Genshen, a visiting scholar from China's Shandong University, with an artist's reception and opening on Wednesday, March 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. The exhibit on display through March 10th at the CSUN Art and Design Center will include prints from posters designed by Professor Guo, as well as his graduate students. The artist's reception will be held at the CSUN Art and Design Center, Room 201, located at 18111 Nordoff Street in Northridge. You can call 818-677-2156 for more information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kid, make a plan, be informed today.
Psst, hey, hey buddy! You with the stupid hat! Come here, closer! No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the streets, or emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally! And you know what else? You can get a citation! And you can be towed!
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Hey, look out for the pothole!
G'day, Troy McAlvin from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Again, we are waiting to arrive with form. We have Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts, all council members. Ten members to begin our council meeting. Now, Form 07, we're waiting to arrive all those council members for form. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Rosendahl, and council members. We intend to begin. We have four members. Sergeant Arms, can you round up the other council members, please? Mr. Smith, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Parks will not be here today. The rest of them are scheduled to be here. Mr. Wesson has arrived. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Parks shows not to be here. Mr. LaBonne has arrived. Thank you, Mr. LaBonne. Mr. LaBonne. We're at six members looking for ten. Ms. Hahn has arrived. Mr. Cory and Mr. Alakon. Ms. Hahn has arrived. Thank you, Mr. Alakon, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Cory, Mr. LaBonne, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. West, I'm councilman design. We're at nine members. One more to begin. Five minutes away. We can start with presentations. CD9, CD14, CD8, CD5. Mr. Corretts, are you ready to begin? With your presentation? Mr. Weezer, you ready? Mr. Weezer is ready. I know. Mr. Weezer is ready. And, um, Mr. Wesson? UCLA forty years is... They didn't take that off my schedule. All right, let's go live. All right, good morning, good afternoon, actually. It's Friday, February 25th at 12:09. Council meeting is starting late due to the funeral services we attended at the cathedral for LA City firefighter Glenn L. Allen. His service is commenced at 9:30, and we just arrived in council. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum yet?
Not yet, sir. We're awaiting one member.
All right, so we will start with presentations for this Friday, February 25th. Our first presentation, Mr. Corretts. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now going to start presentations. Mr. Corretts.
Good morning, members. This is another feline Friday, and we have a lovely cat that actually looks just like one I had growing up. Her name is Basil, and she is a domestic shorthair, black and white, as you can see, very sweet. She's about a year and a half old, and she would be a wonderful cat to adopt. Maybe even for me, although I don't think my wife would be too happy at the moment if I broke our lease by getting one more cat than we're allowed. So, I think someone else will have to adopt this wonderful cat. So, take a look, and hopefully, this is showing in... On television as well, although we can't see that. It's a lovely cat. You can call my office, if you're watching on TV, at 213-473-7005, and we can help you adopt it. She is also located at the North Central Shelter. So, please come and adopt this cat. Anyone here in the audience?
Anyone in chambers? Anyone in chambers?
Anyone in chambers? That's usually our best bet, so don't leave without adopting this wonderful cat. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone in chambers, you are welcome to adopt the cat. If you're viewing at home, please contact Mr. Corretts' office, arrange for the adoption of that beautiful cat. All right, thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Weezer? Mr. Weezer is now ready, so we will go to Mr. Weezer for a presentation. Mr. Jose Weezer.
Gracias. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm very proud to be standing here with some very distinguished individuals who are bringing a spectacular Spanish book fair here to the city of Los Angeles. They are from the University of Guadalajara, and each and every year in the city of Guadalajara, they host the largest, one of the largest Spanish book fairs in the whole world. A few years ago, the city of Los Angeles was the invited city to partake in the book fair where they honored and discussed many artists and writers from the city of Los Angeles. We talked about the city of Los Angeles culture, and, you know, when you step out of the city and you have a foreign country talk about the city of Los Angeles, its way of being, its customs, its practices, you really get a sense that we are living in a city rich with tradition and culture, and a very diverse one at that. And I'm happy to be standing here. Gentlemen who will speak in a moment, Dr. Samuel Schmidt. He is a vice president of academic affairs for the University of Guadalajara. Also here is Marisol Schultz, director of Lea LA. That's what the Spanish book fair is called. And Alejandro Pelayo, the cultural attaché for the council general of Mexico. Now, Lea LA. Lea means read, right? Past tense, present tense, I'm not sure, but it means read. And LA means Los Angeles. So, Lea LA is a three-day event that aims to encourage reading and promote books in Spanish while also celebrating the Latino community, its cultures and customs. It will take place April 29th, 30th, and May 1st of this year at the Los Angeles Convention Center from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and will be open to the public free of charge. During this three-day, one-of-a-kind event, attendees will be able to enjoy book presentations, lectures, and talks by some of the most important Spanish-language authors covering an array of literary works. Celebrated renowned Latin American authors such as Carlos Fuentes, Alberto Ruiz Sanchez, Ara Destrepo, Monica Lavin, and many more will be on hand to discuss their books. I invite all Angelenos to come and enjoy this festival, and it's not only for Spanish speakers. And indeed, here in the city of Los Angeles, we know that we have one of the largest populations of Latin Americans next... One of the largest populations of Latin Americans in the whole world, and the city of Los Angeles hosts the most Mexicans, second only to Mexico City. And so, we know we have a large Spanish population that would want to partake in this, but we invite everyone, because it will be a book fair to celebrate literature, to celebrate reading, and to encourage all of us to continue to read, young and old, and no matter what language we may speak. So, with that, let me invite up to the microphone one of the main promoters of this, and I want to thank the University of Guadalajara for all the resources they're bringing to the city of Los Angeles to make this possible. They have done this year end and year out and are celebrating throughout the world for the work they do at Guadalajara, and they're bringing that same model here to the city of Los Angeles. Let me invite up to the microphone Dr. Samuel Schmidt, vice president of academic affairs of the University of Guadalajara.
Thank you very much, Councilman Weezer. Thank you very much for the council. We are working towards creating the first Mexican university in Los Angeles, and this is the first step we are taking in order to provide education for probably the largest ethnic segment in the city, Hispanics, but of course, we'll be including for other ethnic groups. The book fair is one of the first big steps we're going to take. We have been working already two years. We have been promoting Mexican culture. We have presently two academic programs, one in high school and one in nursing, and this will be the beginning of a very strong collaboration effort, both with the city, with the school district. We are promoting reading in Spanish in the schools, and the book fair will make available many Spanish books for all readers. We know that not only Hispanics are Spanish, and we really appreciate the city giving us this support, and we will appreciate the city supporting us in the future, because the book fair will be a yearly event. Thank you, Congressman... Congressman, not yet.
Councilman.
Congressman Weezer, for your support.
I was going to say, we all look alike, you know, but I don't know if you're talking about Bessetta or... Also with us is Marisol Schultz, the director of Lea Los Angeles, Lea Los Angeles, Lea LA, or Lea LEA.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. President. We are very happy for this recognition in behalf of the University of Guadalajara of Lea LA. We are very happy to bring this city this wonderful book fair. It's going to be a major book fair with the presence of 100 of the best publishing houses in Spanish and even also puts in English, and the presence of the best literary authors. So, well, I thank you, and I invite you to this book fair, April 29th, April 30th, May the 1st, at the convention center.
Well, thank you very much, and indeed, this is a spectacular time for the city of Los Angeles to have the resources come to Los Angeles to celebrate literacy, to celebrate reading, and to celebrate Lea LA being in Los Angeles. We are declaring April Spanish Language Month. And if you think about the demographics in our school district, over 70% of our kids in our school district are Latino. About half are either immigrants or children of immigrants. With those type of demographics, we got to encourage our young people to read, no matter if they're learning English, or Spanish, or any other language. It's been proven over and over again for young people who learn and read in a language other than their own, that they develop and do much better in school. So, this is spectacular for so many reasons, for our young people, for many of us who just want to go explore the different Spanish-language books that are available, and also to go partake in the cultural events that will take place at this event. So, with that, let me present to Marisol Schultz and Dr. Samuel Schmidt a resolution from the city of Los Angeles, not only thanking you, but inspiring us to declare April Spanish Book Month here in the city of Los Angeles. Resolved that the city of Los Angeles support reading events or sessions in the schools during the month of April and support the Feria del Libro Lea LA, which will be held in April 29th through 30th and May 1st. Resolved further that the city of Los Angeles collaborate in the planning and implementation of April as a month of the Spanish book, so that the students can participate in literacy-based activities and begin to develop reading habits as an investment in their future, nurturing a lifelong appetite for books and for reading. And resolved that the city of Los Angeles support and participate in this event to engage the public information office, to publicize and promote the event, and to inform and invite students and their families to participate in all related activities. Muchisimas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Congratulations. And, Mr. Clerk, we now have a quorum. If you can please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas Hahn, Weezer, Corretts, Corcoran, LaBonne, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, West, and Garcetti, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry, second by Mr. Rosendahl.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Corcoran, second by Mr. Corretts.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Please do.
Item one is an item notice for a public hearing. Currently, we have no cards on that item.
On item number one, see no special. Open the roll. Close the roll, tablet to vote.
Eleven ayes.
Continue, please.
Items two through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. There are requests from members to continue item five to March 4th.
Without opposition, number five continued to March 4th. Mr. Alakon? Number four, special, number four. For Mr. Alakon, Mr. Rosendahl? Two and 10 for... Mr. Rosendahl, special, two and 10. Well, we're only... Okay, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Cardenas, I'm sorry, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item number six, if we could continue that item to March 2nd. According to the city attorney's office, we are still within our right to handle that matter through that date. March 6th.
Number six, continue.
Number six, March 6th.
Without opposition. That'll be continued. Anything else, colleagues? Mr. Clerk, on the remaining items, open the roll. Close the roll, tablet to vote.
Eleven ayes.
Continue, please.
Items nine through 16 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Any specials, colleagues? Number nine, special, Mr. Alakon? Any cards, Mr. Clerk? Well, we have cards. We will call that a special.
Sir, we have cards on items number nine, 10, and 12.
Call those special, please.
And 13, sir.
Call those special. Mr. Alakon? That's the end of the agenda, Mr. Clerk? And you want a number... Which one did you want, fourth with? Three and seven, fourth with, please. Three and seven, fourth with. On remaining items, open the roll, close the roll, and tablet to vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well. Mr. Clerk, that completes the agenda?
No, sir. On the continuation agenda, item 17 is item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Number 17, do we have any cards? Special, Mr. Alakon, special, Mr. Alakon?
Yes, sir, we have cards on that as well.
Okay, then that'll be special. That should complete. All right? So, now we'll go to Ms. Perry, Mr. Clerk? All right, Ms. Perry, for a presentation for council districts eight and nine. And, Mr. Reyes, I guess you're going to join since you are an alumni from UCLA. Hold on, Mr. Cardenas. Yes, no?
I apologize. I would like to make a correction, in case there are people in the audience who were here on item number six. I've made a mistake. I apologize. I called item number six to be postponed to March 2nd.
Right.
I meant item number one, so if we could consider item number one, please.
Well, number one, okay, then we're going to have to reopen. Why don't you bring that back? Let's go with the presentation. We'll come back to that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. ...
All right, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, you have it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I've asked Mr. Reyes to join me, as he is an illustrious graduate of the University of California.
You can do it.
I can do it. No, it's okay, it's okay. It's good. I think I'm okay. Yes, yeah, from UCLA. Give me a big applause. UCLA. Clap, clap, clap.
Come on, boys!
Come on, you guys, you gotta do better than that. Okay. Now, today it's my privilege, along with Mr. Reyes, to recognize UCLA for celebrating over 40 years of ethnic studies with its American Indian Studies Center, Asian-American Studies Center, Chicano Studies Research Center, and Ralph J. Bunch Center for African-American Studies. With us in attendance today are the individuals who make up these various departments at UCLA. From the American Indian Studies Center at UCLA, we have Pamela Greeman, Publications Manager. Pamela, raise your hand.
Thank you.
And then, I'm going to share this with you. The AISC at UCLA was proposed by American Indian students in 1969 and founded later that year. For 42 years, AISC has stayed true to its mission to recognize and facilitate research about and for American Indian people in an area of study that was marginalized within mainstream academia. From the Ralph Bunch Center for African-American Studies today is Sabrina Buras, Development Director. Sabrina, raise your hand. Very good, give her a hand. Come on. The Ralph Bunch Center for African-American Studies at UCLA was proposed by Black students in 1969 and founded later that year as a center for Afro-American studies. It was renamed in honor of scholar, diplomat, and first African-American Nobel Peace Prize winner and 1927 UCLA valedictorian Ralph J. Bunch during the centenary of his birth in 2003. With more than 40 years of distinguished service to the broader community, the Bunch Center is today the premier institute for African-American studies on the West Coast focused on tackling the pressing social issues confronting Los Angeles, the region, and the world. In fact, they were a partner in our efforts to develop and preserve the Ralph Bunch House, which is located in the ninth district in the heart of our Central Avenue historic community. Here from Chicano Studies Research Center at UCLA are Carlos Hado and Chris Best, Director of Development. Raise your hand. CSRC at UCLA was proposed by Chicano students in 1969 in order to address profound disparities in educational access for the Mexican descent population in the United States. Today, CSRC is the premier research center for Chicano studies in the United States and publishes the leading journal in its field, maintains the only freestanding Chicano Studies library and archive at a university, and advances research through new findings and methodologies. There you go.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. We also want to recognize from the Asian-American Studies at UCLA are David K. Yu, Director Professor, Melanie De La Cruz, Viesca, Assistant Director, Betty Loon, Management Services Officer.
Officer, Meg Thornton, AASC Student, and Community Projects Coordinator, Marjorie Lee, Librarian, and Chao Office Manager, Christina Lee, AASC Nexus Journal Co-Managing Editor. You're all here. Raise your hand, let's see who you are. Thank you for joining us. AASC emerged in the Civil Rights Strategy struggles of the 1960s and 70s with the belief that Asian American Studies can empower communities, and the communities can enrich the education agenda for future generations. AASC has for over 40 years collected and cataloged historical documents and materials to capture and preserve the Asian American and Pacific Islander experience. These materials range from the Japanese-American Research Project Collection, the largest archive on the Japanese-American experience in the nation, to the acquisition of Los Angeles-based East-West Players Theater Arts Collection, and has become a magnet for scholars studying Asian Americans. And I believe this is yours.
All right. As representative... Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Bruin.
It's okay, Trojan.
Okay, thank you. As a representative of the Little Tokyo community, I can speak firsthand to the importance of preservation work that AASC has done, and I'm proud to recognize UCLA for over 40 years of ethnic studies. Our city truly is a global center for ethnic diversity, and it is amazing that UCLA has chosen to ensure that our young people are afforded the opportunity to study our diversity, and that the larger community can benefit from that important research and historic preservation that these departments have been able to undertake is nothing short of a gift. I'm proud to join my colleagues in commending these outstanding individuals for representing and reflecting the best of our great city, and I would like to ask Pamela Greenan, Sabrina Buras, Carlos Haro, and David Yu, just to come up and say a few short words in recognition.
If I may, Councilmember Perry, before they begin, I wanna thank you.
Thank you, it hurts.
A USC Trojan, stepping up and talking about the needs of our youth. And these days, the budget cuts, our ethnic studies are right now under siege. They are losing resources, they are losing students. I can speak to the Chicano experience. In 1969, we had 49% dropout rates in 1969. In 2011, it has not changed much. So we have a lot, a long way to go, and we need them more now than ever. So, Dr. Haro, and all of you who stepped up, to me, you are, and I say this a lot, but I mean it, the unsung heroes that are out there for our kids. As a youth myself, coming from the inner city, entering UCLA, it was another world, and if it wasn't for Chicano Studies, I probably wouldn't be here today. So I'm gonna thank you for that. Please, microphone's yours.
Pamela, Sabrina, Carlos, and David.
First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Perry, on behalf of the Bunch Center for African-American Studies at UCLA. We're very honored by this recognition today, and we appreciate your support on many of our research projects, including Black Los Angeles and our Educational Access Project, Kappa. Thank you again, and we look forward to your support the next 40 years. Thank you.
Hi, I would like to thank the city council and Councilwoman Perry, on behalf of the American Indian Studies Center for its recognition and its support. Thank you. Carlos?
I am honored to be here today to receive this recognition on behalf of the Chicano Studies Research Center. You not only honor the center's achievements over the last 40 years, but you also honor the legacy of students, the student movement of the 1960s, when we came together with our communities, our various communities, and organized to change the institutions that we were attending. Those institutions have changed dramatically. We now have at UCLA, in the Chicano Studies Center, a library and an archive. The archive is of over 100 collections, including the Edmano Royball Collection, that you should know well, the Grace Montanyas Davis Collection, that you should know well. We also have a publications office, the premier journal in Chicano Studies, ASLAN. It continues for 40 years, established in 1970. We also have research that we provided to graduate students over a 40-year period. Those students have become the teachers, the faculty that have taught you and others. Many of the students that were with us in the 1960s became faculty in various institutions, including USC, Professor Teresa McKenna, who was Chairman of the English Department there, Professor Juan Gómez Quinones, also a UCLA student. Many of you may have taken history courses through Professor Gómez. Reynaldo Macias, a graduate of Garfield High School, unfortunately. I went to Roosevelt High School, but I still worked with him. And some of you may have taken courses with me before I retired. But, the center continues, and it continues because of the efforts of the generation of the 60s, the Chicano Student Movement, and the community, and the coalition of students of various ethnic and racial groups and schools, from East LA College, Cal State System, USC, and Loyola Marymount University, was very well represented in the student movement of the 60s. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, for over 40 years, our centers have been bridging campus and community in Los Angeles through our research and through serving our communities. So on behalf of the Asian American Studies Center, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Perry and the LA City Council for this recognition, and we look forward to the next 40 years.
That's nice. And I wanna thank everybody who came with them today. Chris Best, from Chicano Studies Research Center, and then for the Asian American Studies at UCLA, Melanie De La Cruz, Betty Leong, Meg Thornton, Marjorie Lee, Ann Chow, and Christina Lee. So thanks to all of them, and thank you for your patience. We're gonna go in the back and take some pictures. Thank you.
Ms. Perry, also, you're going to do CDH's presentation, I understand?
Could you please?
Mr. Reyes?
As that continues to present itself, I'd like an opportunity to present to you, and honored to have them, here with us this morning, Ambassador Nicaragua, Francisco Campbell, please answer, and Consul General de Nicaragua, José Alberto Acevedo. Bienvenidos, gracias, por estar aquí con nosotros esta mañana. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, and welcome to City Hall. Thank you. Ms. Perry, a presentation for Councilmember Park.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Honored to be able to recognize Kristen Press. As she comes forward.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Yes. Thank you. Kristen is a forward at Stanford University, and she is the first African-American woman to win the college soccer's most prestigious award, the Herman Trophy. At a ceremony at the Missouri Athletic Club on Friday, January 7th, 2011, Kristen was announced as a winner, marking the second consecutive season a Stanford player has won the award. Kristen is a native of Palos Verdes, led the nation in 26 goals and 60 points while helping the Cardinals reach the College Cup Final, and a 23-1-2 record. For 26 goals, tied the school's single-season scoring record. She is a senior who leaves the program as the most prolific scorer in Stanford history, establishing the career record in goals, 71, assists, 41, and points, 183. She earned Pac-10 Conference Player of the Year, and NSCAA First Team All-America honors. She has also excelled in the classroom, earning First Team Academic All-America honors, and winning the Pac-10's Scholar-Athlete of the Year for her sport. Stanford had an impressive 67-0-1 record. Kristen is the Cardinals' all-time scorer in NCAA tournament play with 13 goals. This season, she led Stanford to its second consecutive perfect conference season, sending the team to its third consecutive College Cup, earning all tournament honors each year. What Kristen Press has truly done, both on and off the field, is commendable, and she deserves to be recognized as the first African-American woman to win the 2010 Herman Award. It's 2010, right? Okay, 2010 Herman Award. Congratulations to Kristen. Give her a big hand.
Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and members. Kristen, you don't know me, at all, but you know my brother, who's standing behind you, and I know your father, and I see, oh, Russ. I didn't recognize Russ, 'cause you look a little bit like Dennis Zine now, Russ.
A very handsome man, I must admit.
Yes, he's very handsome.
Congratulations.
Anyway, we go way back, and it's a trip. You know, I'm a father, I've got four sons, and whenever I'm out with my friends, I would always talk about, you know, how great my sons were at playing football and basketball. I would hear that on the golf course from your father. Now, usually, when somebody tells you that, like, my sons are not pro-football players or pro-baseball players, they were not that good. Your father was definitely telling the truth. We're related to you. And it's just so exciting to see you, to win such a prestigious award, and something that we, in our community, you rarely see many... You know, when we grew up, soccer was not a big thing, but now, we are making it a big thing, and I think you're a trendsetter, first African-American to win this Herman Award. And ask my brother why the name Herman means so much to me. He will tell you, I think that that's one heck of an award. My dad's name was Herman, okay? So that's right. I like the Herman Award. But it's exciting, it's good to see Cody, and you should know, your father has been a dear friend of mine for years. When I was Speaker of the California State Assembly, he and his firm gave us pro bono information to help us through one of the most difficult financial seasons we ever went through, helped me with the rating agencies. So it makes me proud, because, Cody, I can see the pride in your eyes. So next time, when we play golf, your father plays golf, I impersonate a golfer, but next time, anything you tell me about your family, I will believe it. Anyway, congratulations to you.
Thank you so much. And also, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Perry and the LA City Council for this recognition.
Oh, and also, Councilwoman Parks. Okay, thank you. That was a good speech.
Mr. Cartness?
Hold on a second, don't go anywhere. I just wanna congratulate you on your efforts, even though your father probably had a lot to do, and your mother and other people had a lot to do with giving you all that love and commitment that made you who you are today. Nobody was making those goals but you. So I just wanted to congratulate you for becoming the person that everybody dreamed you'd become, and here you are, soaring to incredible heights, winning awards that only one person gets to win. That is special. But also, the reason why I say don't go anywhere, because I need you to help me, because you are a lot younger than the rest of us, and we're always telling young people, go to school, get an education, have fun. If you're into sports and you aspire to be a pro-this or a pro-that athlete or what have you, but along the way, can you share with us, and the children who will watch this, can you share with them how important it is to get an education, and how fun it is to kick goals or do whatever you do, but at the same time, you were going to school at the same time, right? And I'm assuming, I know your father, and I know he wouldn't put up with anything less, and you're an excellent student, aren't you?
I try.
Could you tell us, could you tell us what kind of student you are, in the classroom, out of the classroom? Can you tell us how important it is, and how much fun it can be to be able to do both? And also, please share with us what you wanna do when you grow up. Are you gonna become a pro-soccer player? And even if you do, I can guarantee you're gonna tell us that beyond soccer, you have other dreams as well. Could you please share that with us? Thank you.
Well, I think that my parents would be the first people to say that I love to learn, and for my 22 short years of life, school has always come first, and soccer's been a huge part of my life, and I've learned so many invaluable lessons in soccer, but they've all been applicable to the classroom, determination and focus, and throughout my life, I've always had to keep school first, because it's so important to learn and to grow as a person. And the things that you learn in school, and the things that I've learned at Stanford, have helped me so much just to become a good person, and to work my hardest on the field and off the field. I am gonna be a professional soccer player. There's a women's professional league in the United States, so I'll be playing in Florida. And, but I will continue my education, I'm sure, in Florida and after, if I don't continue soccer.
Could you also share with us, someday it's gonna be after soccer, 'cause people at 40 and 50 and 60 don't usually play soccer, right? So if you could share with us what your other dreams are, because I think it's important for young people to understand is, you can be a professional athlete, but at the same time, you can't just focus just on that, 'cause there is other things in life. But also, I have to take a moment to tease Cody Press, because Cody is one of the smoothest, coolest guy who will come around and talk to us, and educate us, or what have you. But Cody, relax, you look so nervous. Man, let your shoulders down. It's a great moment, man, just take it easy. Thank you.
Yes, after soccer or during soccer, I definitely plan on going back to school. I'd like to further my education, possibly in business. I would be interested in going into sports marketing, and see the business side of that, because I think sports is so important for children, and I know I'd have to learn a lot about the business side of things for me, in order to share and help the world.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That completes the presentation. Thank you very much, congratulations. That's our presentations for Friday, February 25th. Mr. Clerk, we have some pending items. What is the 1 and 6 that we need to reconsider?
Sure, we need to take care of that separately, but before you is a vote to reconsider item number one.
On reconsideration number one, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And, Mr. Cartness? On number one, you wanted to do what with that?
Continue item one. I apologize about item six, that was a mistake. Continue item one to March 2nd.
All right, item one, continue to March 2nd, without objection. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue to March 2nd. Okay, Mr. Clerk, now we have...
Item number six, sir.
On number six...
Again, we'd have to first vote to reconsider, and then second take a vote.
On reconsideration, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, it's now up for reconsideration, and...
I've been informed that staff is presently working on a substitute motion for that. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
It's circulated at this time, so let's hold it on the desk. It's a special, let's call six special.
Do you have any dogs?
I used to.
Let's just call it special now and hold it, and then we'll...
Very good, sir.
All right, next item, please.
Mr. President, at this point in time, would you like to continue with items called special or move to public comment?
Just do public comment, and we'll come back to the agenda. We'll do public comment now. And on public comment...
Mr. President, pardon me, it's been brought to my attention that we do now have 12 members, and it would be appropriate to reconsider item number three. It did have an ordinance.
Then on that item, on the reconsideration, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Items before us, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Now, public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go to the San Fernando Valley, start out there. Donna Piram, our first speaker, in the San Fernando Valley. Donna Piram.
Hello, hi, we didn't get the special agenda out here. Anyway, I'm sorry I didn't get to speak about the gun issue. Criminals won't care about limiting magazines, that they wanna make law-abiding gun owners a criminal. So, that's the only one that's gonna hurt limiting magazines. Anyway, people remember the farm workers, hotel workers, grocery store workers, bus union strikers were trying. They stuck together. That's what they remember, for a common cause. They didn't split and work separately. I have a dream, too, that all public service employees, county, city, state, federal, different unions, different concerns, but one thing they have in common, all being attacked. Let's come together and fight one common enemy, greed, politician greed, envy, politician, low-paying, private-sector employees and unemployed to have envy. Our Muslim Brotherhood can destroy all democracy, and our federal government wants to shut government down. Most of those who depend on its services, most vulnerable, those who depend on Social Security, our city with its open, and our city employees with its open contract for city employees. I need to, we need to fix and get it correct for the city... I need to, we need to fix and get it correct for the city employees, then close it. Our taxpayers most hurt by this, doing this, not gaining anything going out to city employees. Wisconsin is not the way to go. Politicians need to work with unions for a fair solution, with employees' input, especially input. They need to stop wasteful spending like High-Speed Rail, Prop R, $930 million for the CRA for one project. The CRA allotment is draining us dry, along with other city council prep projects, only benefiting a minority of people. Our country could be destroyed, but people look to take away city employees' benefits. I'll be back.
Miriam Fogler.
Boy, oh boy, folks, he wants to go back to the single-shot guns. He wanted to limit the firepower of law-abiding citizens. I can't believe, you're saying that's going to prevent violence? If anything, it probably will cost us thousands of more lives than just to limit us for a few lives. Isn't it worth it to have more firepower, to save more lives, than to limit us and have more dead people on our hands? Think about it, folks, think about that very carefully, okay? So, I can go on about the Second Amendment and all, and our rights, our ineligible rights to have whatever it takes to defend our country, and defend ourselves from the, what you call it, nutcases? You calling us nutcases, Rosendahl? I think that's, that's an insult. I think if anybody's a nutcase, it's the range people, Lautner, who got through the system, who the sheriff at Yucca, I wish I had the phone, I had the phone number here at hand, who gave him the clearance to go ahead and buy a gun, the, you know, the community college reported him as being unstable, and is a nutcase. We're not a nutcase, okay? I don't appreciate American citizens being called nutcases. And then Glenn Beck has the gall to say that the unions are communists. Let me tell you something, American unions are different from European and Middle East unions. They are the communists, not us. We need to stand together, folks, and separate from those that are taking down America. And Wisconsin, that Walker, he's not going by how much money they gave, he's taking away their rights, their living conditions, their working, their working conditions, and the right to have fair wages, good wages. They want to privatize government.
Thank you, and as we continue with public comment, Matt Dowd.
Thank you, yes, First Amendment still alive and well, as you can see. Got the new parade, we're going to have a big parade on the Venice Boardwalk, let me announce that right now for the city of Los Angeles. Got the big banner, we'll be, we'll be, let me give you a preview of the banner. Venice Boardwalk Rules Blocked, we'll read that. A federal judge sees a First Amendment violation in lottery system for performers, okay? Court order puts an end to oceanfront lottery, reinstates amplified music, the Los Angeles funds, you're welcome, America. Matt Dowd and Zuma Dogg, thank you.
Thank you very much, are you...
That's not the end, that's just the announcement.
No, I thought you were finished, go ahead.
Thank you. Now, we're also going ahead with our summary judgment on these council rules, because, see, these people are not attorneys, how are they meant to interpret all these legal things that Eric Garcetti comes up with? You know, all these little angles and things, just let people talk, that's what the federal judge said when we were in there, Judge Dean Pregasin, he said, gee, how long do they get? They only get two minutes? Just let them talk, who cares? It's only words. There's also a federal ruling, the FCC, about profanity. Isolated profanities, they're letting them go on the Super Bowl. That's what you can do now. So we just want to revise the rules to make them compliant with federal laws, you know, settle the case, we got the preliminary injunction, and the attorney, oh my goodness, she's afraid of the word "if," but it's in our case, it's in the legal briefs that the judge wrote it in the court order.
All right, David Barron, David Barron, our next public speaker on public comment time here. And Mr. Robinson will be after. Mr. Barron.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm David Barron, B-A-R-R-O-N. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, city council members, I have some strong concerns regarding our city's budget. The revenues from the actual city budget adopted are as follows, in 2005, it was $5.9 billion, 2006, $6.6 billion, 2007, $6.8 billion, 2008, $7.1 billion, 2009, $6.8 billion, 2010, $6.7 billion. The all-time high was 2008 at $7.1 billion. The current fiscal year revenues at $6.7 are just below, are just 6% below the all-time high. The revenues for fiscal year 2005, by contrast, were 17% below the all-time high, and yet the city survived. Even adjusting for inflation using the Bureau of Labor Statistics website, the $5.9 billion collected in 2005 is equivalent to $6.65 billion today, which is actually a little less than the city's current budget revenues. So using the science of arithmetic, we observe the city does not have a budget-revenue problem. So I urge you to redirect our tax revenues where they were intended to, and that is to all our court services. There is no need to reduce city services to the general public. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, my respect to you all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Richard Robinson, our next speaker, followed by Jeff Palmer. Jeff Palmer, you're on deck.
Mr. President, Mr. President, members, antisemitism is rearing its insidious head. Sir, Mel Gibson typifies a skinhead-like movement that would include this generation of young people searching for identity. Liberating millions of folks nationwide is a film which is gaining a greater audience. It would have an even greater audience if the Los Angeles Times were a little less... What would be a good word? Silly? Trying to puff their particular film? If you read the Los Angeles Times, it is one of the most disgusting photographs I've ever seen. Natalie Portman, starring in, no strings attached, we all saw Black Swan, which has been somewhat blacklisted. Pardon me, still. Anyhow, to portray with such a, you know, calling her... There has to be a new approach to sex in this millennium. Victoria, Queen Victoria is dead, so we're going to have to get used to situational ethics. But this old crap indicates Hollywood's prejudice, not Hollywood itself, but those looming around Hollywood in order to bring its racism.
Thank you very much, Jeff Palmer. And Arnold Sacks will be after Mr. Palmer.
Hi, I'm Jeff Palmer, I'm here to request that the city do what it can to help promote a new stock exchange in the city of Los Angeles. A new stock exchange would help increase enterprise, everything starts with ideas and innovation, but without money, there's no way to implement. Transformation of innovation into reality requires huge amounts of capital. When America was in its early growth stages, it was the stock markets in New York that provided the conduit for capital that was needed to grow America. The money to grow America came from Europe. New York became the landing spot for this money. The deep-pocketed European investors who saw the opportunity and had the vision funded the growth of America. And with its proximity to Europe, New York has thrived in this regard for over a century. California is no different. It is young, it is still in its early growth stages, and the new ideas are flowing. Now we just need the money. And we should look to Asia to find our capital source. They have the kind of money that we desperately need in order to fund our growth. With our proximity to China and the other growing Asian economies, we could become the place for them to touch down with their capital, thus make it easy for them to fund our growth right here in Los Angeles. The potential is phenomenal, and the amount of money we need to implement our full potential is staggering. The bottom line is this, without the money, all we will have is a bunch of good ideas and not much action. We need to raise the money, just like New York did. The great brain power from Stanford and UC Berkeley that started the high-tech revolution in Silicon Valley was truly amazing, but without the deep-pocketed venture capital investors on Sand Hill Road in Palo Alto, none of that would have happened.
Thank you, sir. Arnold Sacks, followed by Walter Bechtel. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Walter Bechtel, you're on deck.
Thank you, DZIN. Thank you, good morning. Maybe you might have read either the LA Times or the Daily Breeze. The governor of California sat in on bipartisan committee meeting to discuss the budget problems for the state. So I was wondering, has the mayor come in to sit in on the budget problems for the city of LA? You know, you've decided to turn down, fortunately, the parking garage fiasco, which would have netted the city $53 million to help in the city's budget. But since you've turned that $53 million down, not only do you have to come up with the $53 million, but you have to come up with the money that would have been paid to cover the debt service on the garages, because that was part of the deal. The total amount you would have gotten for the bid would have covered that debt service and included $53 million extra. So how much exactly is the city behind? Could it be 60 million? Could it be 65 million? Do we have any idea, or maybe the public, you know, they only pay what the debt services on the parking garages that is not included? Isn't that $53 million that was talked about as part of the funds that would have been allocated to one year's budget? And let's not forget, of that $53 million, probably close to 30 million of it was, is due to the pay raise that you gave to the coalition because of the layoffs, because you put a cap on the early retirement program, which forced you to lay off 300 people, which ended up costing the city over $30 million. Plus, the fact that you didn't take the $20 million from the DWP that AIDS-Freeman offered to pay when you gave them not only the 6 tenths of a percent pay raise, but to pay...
All right, thank you. Walter Bechtel, followed by Armando Herman. Walter Bechtel, you in chambers? Walter Bechtel going twice? Walter Bechtel not here? And then it'll be Zuma Dogg after Mr. Herman.
Council members, constituents, and residents of Los Angeles, why is there no wrong without remedy? Why is there no wrong without remedy? It's obvious that today, in this critical time, we see that local government cannot function without its assistance of its constituents, to point out their conversations, to point out their closed-door, so-called arrangements. And it would be nice if Mr. Ed Reyes would listen, because this falls into his council district as well as Mr. Jose Wezar. Some have said, why do we approach so harsh and so angry at our council members? Well, the reason is because today, we are all under the recession, we are all under and behind the budget that our council government has allowed to collapse, and now they're taking it away from you. All of you, we're all impacted and affected by it, but no one seems to worry. Your padded wallets are fine, right? But what about the constituents that do not fall under your category? If we see inappropriate or wrong, that we have a power to stop and do not do nothing or anything about, we make ourselves a share of the guilt and of this guilt. Justice delayed is worse than injustice as what's going on today. All I ask is that one day soon, our councilmen who represents CD14, which is Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights, Mount Herman, and so forth, will represent it in a way that benefits everyone in the community. All constituents will have equal access to government that is efficient and appropriate and accountable for its constituents, and I ask that you listen.
Thank you, Zuma Dogg.
Yes, good morning, there's Rosendahl back there, chefing those cards around for his item. Yeah, and I'd like to say, first of all, I got to apologize to the city attorney, Laurie, and to Bill. I wake up early at 9:00 in the morning, just cranky as hell over this Venice stuff, and oh, boy, you don't want to read those emails. But again, I need to commit my undying love for Bill Rosendahl, the great spirit who I will love for the rest of my life, but there are issues at Venice. And I won't waste your time about that right now for the rest of the community, I don't have much time, I might not be here, but we have elections coming up on Tuesday, March 8th, and that's less than two weeks away. So briefly, we saw David Barron, who spoke earlier today, I hope everybody votes for David Barron in CD6 instead of Tony Cardenas. Austin Dragon and Althea Shaw, I hope everybody picks between Althea Shaw or Austin Dragon, two decent, decent, good people in CD10 instead of Herb Wesson. Also, no on Mitch Englander. People don't realize there's an open seat in CD12, Mitch Englander, he is the anointed City Hall candidate. He said on his, he said he's a police officer on the ballot designation, oh, he forgot to say he's chief of staff, okay? Why did he not want people to know that? So there are a lot of good people to vote for, make sure you get out and vote against Mitch Englander, no matter who it is, you don't even want to know why. Also, the same advice in CD14, Jose Wezar's running, vote against anybody but Jose Wezar, pick anybody else on the ballot in CD14. And, very important, and this is when I really get into trouble, CD8, Bernard Parks, you must have him reelected. He has become the grassroots candidate. There are the shady unions and all the wrong factions that are backing an opponent. I think Parks has a real tough time, a lot of money against him. I don't, and the people say, well, gee, the district looks crappy. It looks crappy everywhere. You don't want the opposition of Parks, I'm begging you, you don't realize it, reelect Bernard Parks. LACityNews.com.
And that'll be our final public speaker on public speaking comment.
Respectable city council members, dear fellow Angelinos, my name is Arminak Nodjani. I am a liberal writing candidate for city council member, city council, for city council from District 8. Well, actually, what mean, as a registered liberal candidate for city council from District 8, and I will reduce middle-class and poor Angelos homeowners taxes 40%, so that those homeowners could actually fix their dilapidated houses and health problems. I also want very much to close down all marijuana dispensaries, because we violate Control Substances Act. And so far, the agent, we refuse to close down those Los Angeles-based medical marijuana dispensaries, and we're backed up by President Obama, and so far, there is no legal way for, you know, to close down those medical marijuana dispensaries. We don't have enough power. I also issue, I also will very much sponsor issuing managed licenses to homosexuals and lesbians. and lesbians, so we could enjoy equal civil rights and privileges and the benefits of , and the responsibility of marriage, equal to those heterosexuals. I will actually expedite issuance of, issuance of those Section 8 housing vouchers, so that business could thrive and actually retail sales will go up. And I also demand raising taxes against those oil producers, four dollars more. It's more than $1.44, it's now in the ballot. It's four dollars more, so it will be about $6 for each barrel of oil produced in Los Angeles area, so we could eliminate city budget deficit. If we don't eliminate city budget deficit, we will, city checks will rebound.
Thank you. That completes public comment for today. Mr. Clerk, Ms. Perry. Excuse me, Ms. Perry.
Chair, could we take Items 4 and 9 out of order, since department representatives are here, as the general manager is here?
4 and 9 is the one.
Out of order. So we can let Mr. Nichols go back to him.
All right. And then also, Mr. Rosendahl wants to move 10 also, so, we do have a general manager here in chambers, so due respect to his time, let's do that. Mr. Clerk, can we do 6 quickly?
Sir, I believe we can. If I'm not mistaken, you have one speaker's card left.
Let's do 6, and then we'll do 4 and 9, then we'll go to Mr. Rosendahl, number 10. So let's do number 6. I understand that has been circulated.
For the record, a substitute motion has been circulated.
Okay. And there's one comment card, Arnold Sachs on number 6. Arnold Sachs passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. So the substitute motion is now before us. Colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Very good. Number 6 is complete. So Ms. Perry, we can do 4 and 9, and then we'll go to Mr. Rosendahl, number 10.
Thank you very...
2 and 10, I'm sorry, 2 and 10.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
And if I can have Mr. Nichols just come to the front table and give us some information. Thanks, Mr. Nichols. I understand this transfer will be submitted to the city in an initial lump sum of $127.4 million, and the remaining balance will be provided in monthly installments of $21.5 million through June 2011. And I wanted to know if this approach is going to be utilized to assist the department, or is there another rationale? And I'm just going to say my other questions, because I'm going to run out of time.
Okay.
Do you anticipate any issues with the monthly payments on the transfer? And in the future years, can the city expect a stable transfer process, hopefully, if J passes? And then, given the push for energy efficiency and the use of less energy citywide, do you anticipate any impact on revenues?
Thank you, Madam Counsel. The amount of the payment, initial payment, actually is $129 million, $129,407,000. It's a little bit, a little bit higher than the figure that you'd indicated. And the monthly amounts, then, would be...
If we start...
Yeah, if we start, if we start as of April, it will be $43.1 million roughly per month. And we don't anticipate any issues with the monthly transfers. We've budgeted this money. It's predicated on last year's actual total revenue and net income, and it's budgeted going forward in our budget that will be, you'll be receiving soon. The, in terms of future years, we, the method's the same, the calculation would be the same. We predicated on the 8% of the audited, then again, on the audited prior year's financials. And as long as our total net revenue is of that nature, then that's, you know, that's the approximate level that we anticipate going forward. As far as the effect of energy efficiency and the use of less energy citywide, generally speaking, that doesn't overall have a material impact on the total cost of energy. That is, the total revenue that we have, because essentially, what we end up doing is we make, in most cases, we're making payments for energy efficiency, if you will. So we're, instead of paying for power supply and burning of fuel and the like, we make payments and investments for our customers to use less energy. So generally speaking, the total revenue is about the same, and therefore, you know, all else equal, it provides for the same general level of transfer. Now, if there were an overall economic, continued economic decline, and as a result of simply, you know, less customers or just economic malaise, that could reduce our total revenue and could have some impact. But I think we're all very hopeful that our economy's turning the other way and that that won't be the case.
No one else on the queue, Ms. Perry?
Items 4 and 9, I don't know how you want to handle this, whether you want to take them together, but they are in strictly intertwined. So if you want, we can take them both together.
We've got cards on number 9.
Okay.
Number 9, let's go to the Valley Don Perman. Number 9.
Anyway, here we go. Anyway, this money shows that this, that's the money from the DWP to put in the reserve should be going to sanitation, not the reserve fund. Our sanitation is on skeleton crew, and they have limited overtime, and they can't get the work that they want done through. We have pipes bursting. Sanitation's essential to all the city, as important as DWP. It should work, they should work together. Sanitation is a safety issue. It's not taken seriously. You can see water carrying disease, and then you'll have a real big problem. You want diphtheria. You want more in reserve so we can use it for the CRA. CRA. What is it good for? Absolutely nothing. City council has not shown that they know how to use the reserve money. I see number 4 and number 9, they spoke the same thing, $258,825,000. We need to be able to, we need the money in the reserve to be able to save all the city services, so that we won't be able to have, need any layoffs. So we won't need any of the particular furloughs that we have right now for the services that are over there, so that people, we can get all our services through. And we, we don't need the money to stay over there in the reserves so that we can earmark it for the CRA. And so the allotment, they're saying, "Well, since our city is doing so well, let's make a larger allotment." In the meantime, our libraries are not having enough of allotment, and that's why we have this thing on the Prop L to, that's our more in the allotment for it. And that's because the city council doesn't know how to use its money. And I'm going to be able to let you speak to, let Miriam Fogler speak and finish it. No on L.
Miriam Fogler.
You people don't know how to use the money. And if I, I am glad to volunteer down there and show you how to do it and do the books for you. I'll do it myself. I do it at home for myself. Let me tell you, folks, this money is supposed to go to the sanitation, to treat water. The Department of Water and Power provides water to everybody here, and if you don't treat the water, you get diphtheria, okay? That's why you can't have the money transferred to a reserve account and then use it for petty projects like CRA and other things that you want to waste money on, that you want to put down everything you can to put your projects through and take away from the labor force, who are providing services to the public. And let me tell you, folks, if you want to roll back the government to become private, by all means, then this is exactly what you're doing, okay? You're putting this money in a nice, like in a lockbox for the politicians to go ahead and take their money, like the library, Prop L, okay? And these, these different fundings that they're going to do on the ballot, vote them all down, except H, okay? You can vote yes on H, vote no on all of them, because they're all for servicing the politicians. Marbiocracy on the Department of Water and Power advocate. That's just another department, we don't have the money to pay for it.
Please get back on target.
Well, if you're going to take the money from the Power Department...
You're on the right subject. You're on the wrong subject, ma'am.
We're talking about the reserve. We're talking about this.
We're not talking about what you're talking about.
Well, you tell me what I'm supposed to talk about. I want my time back.
Well, there's only four seconds left, so I don't have the time to tell you that. So thank you very much. Arnold Sachs, next speaker. Arnold Sachs.
You know she's still screaming back there right now.
And after Arnold Sachs, there'll be Matt Dowd and then Zuma Dog, our final speaker on number 9.
Thank you. Good morning again, or good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Sherman and Mr., Sherman and Mr. Peabody decided to get in the Wayback Machine and go back to last year. At this time, you were discussing making a payment of $73 million on the $220 million transfer from DWP. So that would have been, the payments would have been every four months. Now we come to find out, this payment is once, and then $21 million for five months. So when was the change made to alert the public regarding that? And when was the $73 million? I mean, the payment was supposed to be made in March, so April, May, June, July would have been a $73 million payment we never heard about. So from July until March of this year, there's been no payment. How has the budget been? The numbers thrown around for the budget, how can you change a payment plan that has, that's based on quarters, or based on thirds, into one based on one large upfront pay, or mid-year payment, and then five more $21 million payments, whatever? Is this a standard that'll be for the next budget, when the budget deficit is even greater than this year's budget deficit? Maybe that was heard in the Department of, I mean, the Energy and Environmental Committee report. We don't know. Was that ever agendized? Maybe it was heard at the DWP when they had a board hearing. I don't know. Was that ever agendized? It'd be nice if the public was kept informed of just what's going on with the budget and how the payments are being made. We have this figure, and we also have, just as an example, the $930 million that nobody knew about at the...
Thank you. Thank you, Arnold Sachs. Zuma Dog, followed by Matt Dowd, our final two speakers on number 9.
Ah, yes, deja vu again, y'all, because we're talking about the money transfers from the DWP and in the reserve fund. Now, a few things, it says here, $258 million. First of all, the things that I have written down in my notes, DWP is going to need this money in their account, because it's been announced that they have been overcharging ratepayers for years and years. Oh, by the way, people watching at home, in case you haven't heard, DWP's been overcharging ratepayers for years and years and years over the trash collection fees. And they owe a lot of people a lot of money in refunds, and that does not even include the class action lawsuits. So this money needs to stay in there for that. Secondly, we always have, you know, these, the pipes bursting all over the place, and you're putting more and more high-density projects online, and you still haven't addressed the outdated DWP infrastructure. Why don't you leave the DWP money in the DWP, and then they can use it for the DWP? Because whenever we give it to you, you just squander it through fraud, waste, abuse. The city's now going bankrupt. So I don't think, you know what, either the reason we have to put this in the reserve fund is because you have to cover the pension losses, because you put it in fake phony LLCs when Antonio Vieragosa became mayor, and he put everybody in commissioners, and you approved them, and then the liquid capital funds gave it to each other, and so now we got to do all this. So some other things, because time's running out, is that the reason you need this money is to cover pension losses. I'm sorry. But the main thing, in the little bit of time I have left, is why don't you just keep the money? Oh, then you don't have to raise rates, the other thing. Why don't you just leave this money in the DWP, and then they don't have to keep raising rates? Because the mayor's putting so much arm-twisting to do all this green crap that they're jamming down his throat, and it keeps driving up costs so much. Why don't you pay for it out of that? Or why don't you just use it for anything except what you want to use it for, which always ends up going south? And I'm really glad that CAO Miguel Santana just walked into the room. Maybe he can explain to council what alternative investments and Henry Cisneros HUD workforce housing had to do with this, and it has to do with everything.
That's our final public speaker on this matter. Ms. Perry?
That's fine. Just open the roll, please.
Ms. Perry, I can't hear you. Is there a motion to move?
Motion, yeah.
Okay.
Open the roll.
All right. On that matter, colleagues, open the roll.
I can sit up there and do it for you.
Close the, I'm just trying to listen to what you're saying.
No, 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 it's fine.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. Okay. Next item, please. Mr. Rosendahl wants to move number 10. So out of courtesy, let's go to number 10.
2 and 10 together, it's the same.
2, I'm sorry, 2 and 10. We have common cards on 2.
Yeah.
10, 10. Mr. Alakon, hold on a second.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me. Mr. Alakon wants to vote no on the last item. Record Mr. Alakon as a no.
Mr. Chair, can we have that go forthwith, please?
Ms. Perry, can you use the microphone? I can't hear you.
Yes. Can we have that go forthwith, please?
All right, let's reconsider it.
Okay, motion to reconsider.
Mr. Post my reconsideration. No objection. Reconsider, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Very well.
Alakon showed up as a yes. He wanted him to vote as a no.
So on this, Mr. Alakon?
This is a motion on reconsideration. All right, now we're going to vote ahead.
On the motion on reconsideration, open the roll on the reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Yep, got it. Okay.
Okay, now it's up for reconsideration. Now, on the matter itself, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Okay, very well.
And I'd like for that to go forthwith, please.
Very well, forthwith. That will carry over for a second reading next week. Ms. Perry, second read next week, it only had 11 votes. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Now we've got 2 and 10. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes.
We have a number of cards on vote. What would you like to do?
Yes. There's a couple of things I'd like to do, folks, if it's agreeable with my colleagues, is give everybody one minute, but I know that LMU would like to read into the records some of the people that have filled the cards, so we can keep our group here. So what I'd like to do is mention a couple of quick comments overview, folks. LMU is a great institution in the 11th District. We're very proud to have it there. The neighbors have been engaged in serious negotiations for about three years. And I just want to shout out to the McConnell Quality of Life Group and Hole, who have spent many hours, I've been in the room with them on weekends and evenings, working with the university. Linda Kokola and Richard Hoffmeister, Ron Marx, Bill Henrichs, Ross Williams, Erica Kramer, and many others. I just want to shout out for that community involvement. I want to thank the neighborhood council for its commitment and involvement and public hearings they have held. And I also want to thank the university and its leadership, especially its president, David Bircham, and vice president Lynn Scarborough, for their leadership as well. Everybody has worked hard on this. My office has worked hard on this, city attorney's office, and the planning office. I'd like the planning, general manager, to make a quick comment, colleagues, on exactly what we're doing, and then we'll go to public comment for one minute, and colleagues, we'll make it quick, so that we can all move forward. Okay? Thank you. Please, introduce yourself and tell us what we're doing here today.
Thank you, Councilman Michael Legrand, Director of Planning, City of Los Angeles Planning Department. Along with me is Jeff Poole, a city planner, and Amy Brothers from the city attorney's office, and Ken Fong, also from the city attorney's office. Before you today is an environmental impact report, mitigation measures, mitigation monitoring reporting program, as well as overriding considerations, as you can see in the document before you. Basically, in a nutshell, this is a specific plan to allow for the university to have growth over the years. Basically, rather than seeing the university come in, every building for every building, we're able to come up with a consolidated plan for the university and to prepare for it, to make sure that it's sensitive to its neighbors. I think the university and the community have done a great job in terms of getting together to work out some solutions, some very difficult issues, that this university can really be a model for, how we do deal with the growing need for education services that exist in single-family neighborhoods. And so I'd love to use this as a model for future developments. The staff has submitted in the city attorney's office some technical corrections that are before you for the document that we asked through consideration, and available for any questions. questions.
Cards now.
I'm sorry, combining the two and 10 together. Yes, go ahead, ma'am, go ahead.
Deputy City Attorney Amy Brothers, just quickly, I wanted to point out what the technical amendments were, so that there's no question, and as the Director of Planning mentioned, these are offered by the City Attorney's Office and the Planning Department, and we believe we have the full support of LMU on this. Just quickly, the amendments affect Sections 2.3 and 3.8, and clarify that the city's land use approval pertains to sales and dispensing for consideration of alcohol on campus. The amendments to Section 5.2 on parking makes clear that Department of City Planning, rather than Department of Building and Safety, is responsible for ensuring LMU is providing sufficient parking. The amendments to 7.1 concerning signage makes Department of City Planning, rather than Department of Building and Safety, responsible for ensuring LMU's proposed signs meet the conditions in the specific plan. And finally, the amendment to Exhibit 6 adds a definition of athletic field scholarship signs, sponsorship signs, excuse me. And if I may, also, Department of Building and Safety responded to City Attorney's Rule 38 letter, so these amendments also reflect changes that Department of Building and Safety requested.
And I want to thank the City Attorney's Office, Mr. President, for their support and leadership, the Planning Department, and Building and Safety as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you. This is now public comment, we're going to do a minute per individual on these matters. Matt Dowd, Matt Dowd not here. Matt Dowd is here in the back.
Yes.
Number two, 10, they are together. You get one minute, sir.
Yes, thank you, of course, amendments, zone changes, all the bad things. You know, I want to recall for a moratorium on the city of LA until they settle a case, y'all.
Michelle Garakian, followed by Flora Choi.
Hi, Michelle Garakian with the Los Angeles Business Council. Thank you very much for having me here today. The LE Business Council is very pleased to see that LMU is embarking on this very important time in their history. A critical component to the university's success is the ability to create and maintain competitive facilities that will attract and retain high-quality students and faculty. By upgrading the student housing and academic buildings, it will continue to be a strong and viable economic engine that will give back to businesses and residents around it. The development of the master plan alone will generate an estimated $1.7 billion and more than 15,000 jobs throughout the county. LMU's operations will generate more than $519 million each year and will support more than 6,000 jobs. As you know, these are very important figures, especially during a time when the economy has taken a severe toll on businesses throughout LA. It is for these reasons that the LA-ABC fully supports the LMU master plans and asks the council to move ahead with this. Thank you.
Flora Choi? Flora Choi, is there Flora Choi here?
No, 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 Flora Choi is--
Ms. Chu has yielded her time to President David Bircham.
No, there's no yield of time. Is Flora Choi going to speak or not? We don't yield time.
Good afternoon, my name is Flora Chu. I'm the preservation advocate for the Los Angeles Conservancy. The Conservancy is very pleased to offer our support for LMU's 20-year master plan, as discussions have resulted in greater preservation and planning for some of the historic resources on campus. Specifically, the 1962 Foley Center, designed by renowned architect Edward Darrell Stone, and one of the most distinctive buildings on campus. With the assistance of Councilmember Rosendahl and his staff, LMU has listened to our concerns and included in the specific plan additional review for the Foley Center, when and if demolition or major alterations are proposed in the future. Again, the Conservancy offers our support for this proposal and looks forward to working with LMU as plans for the Foley Center develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Bircham, followed by Lynn Scarborough, followed by Karen Kane. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is David Bircham, I'm the President of Loyola Marymount University. It's an honor to appear before you this afternoon. We are very excited about the pending approval of our 20-year master plan. It is vitally necessary for the continued growth that we have internally, without increasing the geographical footprint of our campus, but internally, in terms of what we're trying to do to ensure academic excellence and that we continue in our mission to create men and women for others. A few thank yous are in order. I want to thank particularly the Plum Committee chaired by Ed Reyes and Councilmembers Kocorian and Weezer. They were instrumental in moving this forward. I'd also like to thank in particular Councilman Bill Rosendahl and his office staff. As we sat and worked with our neighbors, most of the time, the university's interests and the neighborhood's interests were consistent with one another, but when they diverted and diverged, Councilman Rosendahl and his staff are absolutely instrumental in mediating those interests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynn Scarborough, followed by Karen Kane, followed by Christina Davis.
Thank you very much for your support, for everyone's support, and we just want to ask the folks in the room who don't want to speak but are here in support of this to stand. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Kane, Christina Davis, Don Duckworth, Mason Shan, Alex Centano, Renata Semiri, Joe Rasmussen, Lane Bove, Don Smith, Dave Voss, Randy Roach, Ramon Brown, George Milston, Cindy Stewart, Bill Henrichs, Richard Hoffmeister, Michael Banner, and Linda Kokular. Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Council President, only because of quorum, can we move two and 10? Otherwise, we're going to have to--
It's fine with me, but the cards were here, Mr. Rosendahl came up and discussed this with me, and these folks don't need to speak, we can go ahead and take the vote.
I understand, Councilmember Alakon is going to leave. If he does, we don't have the votes. Finish this.
I read the names, if they don't need to speak, we read the names in the record. If they wish to waive their time, and then we can take the vote, because I understand we're going to lose our 12th member.
Those who want to speak, come on, those who don't want to speak, don't need to.
So, Mr. Rosendahl, if they choose not to speak, we've read their names in the record.
Correct.
Your name, sir? You get one minute, go ahead, sir.
My name is Ramon Brown. Our family has, our family has lived at 7849 McConnell Avenue. Our property is directly adjacent to the athletic fields. We share a common boundary. I cannot support LMU's 20-year master plan in its present form. Noise, dust, and lack of adequate buffer zones are my main concerns, that have not been adequately addressed. Construction emissions, dust, and construction noise will exceed the standard thresholds as identified in the EIR. These impacts have been waived, since they say that they will prevent LMU from meeting their stated goals. How about LMU's meeting their goals to live in a healthy environment? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, I've talked to both of them, and there's just one more constituent who wants to speak, and then we can go into the vote.
Mr. Alakon's ready to part.
I understand that.
One minute, ma'am, go ahead, go ahead.
Linda Kokular, McConnell Avenue, Hole Coordinator. The preservation and protection of our neighborhood is important to us. Although we appreciate the enormous amount of time that LMU and their attorneys have spent discussing this project, we still have concerns about compliance, enforcement, accountability, and truthfulness. Yesterday's student paper revealed a bar on campus had been operating without an alcohol license. Another stressed forcing the neighbors to consider permit parking. We pay property taxes, why must we pay to park our cars? Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl, for your continued support of a 20-foot vegetative buffer, sufficient on-campus parking, and the relocation of the waste recycling. We appreciate the concessions LMU has made. McConnell residents still do not want dorms 40 feet from our backyards, but we gained half the buffer we requested. Thank you.
Can we move for a vote, Council President?
Mr. Voss and Mr. Reyes wish to speak, and Mr. Alakon's going to leave.
All right, let's vote.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, colleagues, the matter is now before us for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
There you go, thank you. Thank you, Loyola Marymount University. Okay, Mr. Clark, next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 11, called Special for Cards.
Uh, excuse me, say that again, please? Ms. Perry is distracting me.
Item 11, called Special for Cards.
Number 11. 11 for Cards, Zuma Dogg, Matt Dowd, number 11. In chambers, we're still in session, so please quiet down. Thank you.
Boy, the candidates, they must have been so shady, they're all so happy. All right, it's Zuma Dogg, and I've written so much about this topic at LACityNews.com. We're talking about rent escrow, and I'd like to say, people, I would like you to take all of these properties off the rent escrow program pending the FBI investigation. I'm here to confirm that the FBI has been questioning community members over your rent escrow housing program, and I am also told that there's millions of dollars missing from the account, and I'm also told that Hakam Mordazai has stepped down under scrutiny. And, you know, it's very hard to concentrate, so all I like to say is that since I can't talk, I will let the FBI and the feds do the talking. Please take all of these properties off of rent escrow, because to confirm the top headlines among the many federal investigations into LA City Hall, that includes pensions, it also includes rent escrow. Boy!
Let's give it to your agenda.
Excuse me, hold on a second. Let's start this clock over. Sergeant Arms, can you please clear the chamber of those folks that are disturbing this meeting? They can take their conversations outside, and they're all gathered in the back of the room. So, hold on, Mr. Dowd, so we can get this place quieted down. They're exuberant about their success today.
Want a donation?
All right, Matt Dowd, two minutes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Matt Dowd, Los Angeles City Council. I'll take a minute on this one, and he has a lot of problems within the Housing Department and the RE program, and I'll confirm, I think it is under investigation. Missing money could plug some of the budget gaps right now from this department, so I would expect the City Council to, well, no, they won't open an investigation. What's wrong with the microphone here? It's all, so, yeah, the sound's all weird, I guess. Tony and myself, thank you.
Thank you. Matters before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item number 12, called Special for Cards.
Number 12, Arnold Sachs, Zuma Dogg, Matt Dowd, in that order.
Unbelievable.
Hi, sir.
Ah.
Weirdo. It's good for you. Can I get over my bike thing, and I'll be so happy.
Did you write it right?
Thank you. Afternoon, Arnold Sachs. CRA, Labor and Employment Legal Services to be paid for--
remembering.
Well, not a general fund, but where will the money be paid for? You know, on item number five, the money is coming from--
Life is short, man.
--the government, the federal government's award to the city. This doesn't have any term saved, it says extended terms, pay for labor and employment legal services. What about the labor and employment services regarding the Heike Road private parking garage as part of the Grand Avenue project? And what about the legal services for the sale of the property in Hollywood? Who paid for those legal services? Why, when the CRA has $930 million, is there such a difficult time for the paper trail?
Zuma Dogg, Matt Dowd.
Pass.
Matt Dowd, Zuma Dogg passes.
Yes, the shady alert comes on, the shadah, they call it, for the CRA, and of course, see, they're like, it's just so typical of the city of LA right now. If they can get out of something with some little loophole, they will. No matter what, there's no good faith anymore between the constituents and the city, let me tell you about this. Because we had a federal jury for Michael Hunt--
It's my shield.
--of all people, and you should have seen the people who hated the city, because they've been violated. Now, let me get back onto this, how it ties into this, before Dion can do it. See, this is shady, they're not disclosing the amount of money that they've front-end loading into these attorneys, when they take all the CRA money and they hose it into these guys, and why can't you just tell people?
Thank you. On the matter, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item 13, called Special for Cards.
Zuma Dogg, Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd, Zuma Dogg on number 13. Zuma Dogg says no, Matt Dowd's there.
Yes, the lucky brand, very lucky to get $300,000 from the Housing Department General Administration for tenant improvements and other eligible costs. Sounds good, you know, Ed Reyes district, I think, this one, is it? Or Weezer, it's one of the two, but here's what you need to look at. Earthquake improvements and modifications in the light of what's happening in Christchurch, New Zealand. Let me tell you that the worst loss of life in this current earthquake is from multi-story constructions, not the single-story family homes. So, there's where you can look at spending some money is improving these multi-story complexes and getting them up to some kind of earthquake code or standard, because even though it may, you know, if you hit a 7.5 in this city, it's over.
On the matter, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 17, called Special for Cards, and Councilmember Alakon.
Matt Dowd, Zuma Dogg, Arnold Sachs. Matt Dowd, Zuma Dogg, Arnold Sachs.
All righty, we're talking about the granddaddy of all municipal bankrupting items, HUD. The reason I say that is because I remember when the CAO came up here, and you asked him, gee, CAO, how come we're having this budget crisis, and where everything's having to get fired and cut and destroyed? And he said, gee, the reason was the pension money invested in HUD housing, Henry Cisneros' workforce housing, and now, all of this, billions out of the general fund. So, here we have something else on the agenda, HUD, and it says shift funds here, shift funds there, shift funds here, increase the current amount, ta-da-da. Hey, wait a minute, didn't I just see CBS 2 News yesterday? David Goldstein talking about how that the department we're talking about here, like Maria Del Angel. Was Maria Del Angel on CBS 2 News talking about how she, yeah, yeah, boy, it's real interesting, isn't it? Maria Del Angel, she was on CBS 2 News yesterday, talking about her Ritz-Carlton extravagant expenditures, and what she's doing with the money that's supposed to be in the community. So, I'd like to make sure that the Maria Del Angel doesn't eat up all this HUD money that's supposed to be owned for the housing, because I'd also like to remind council, and please heed this very important warning, as LA's top blogger and Google statistic reader, I'm here to tell you that there's an FBI investigation into this. Bonnie Bray Housing. The Bonnie Bray Housing--